Good afternoon. I call the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners, November Work Session to order. Today's November 10th. It's 3:00 PM and I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Oberg?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Loa?
Here.
Present. And today we have no ceremonial or recognition. And do we have any citizens' comments? No citizens' comments, so we can go right into discussion items. And first, we have a presentation from our new Salvation Army, or new-ish Salvation Army Major Carl Melton. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, friends, thank you. I don't know how to address the front of the mat. Thank you for allowing me to come and present. I've shared several of you, but my wife and I, our family, are new to Frankfurt as of the end of June. We are thrilled to be here in the Frankfurt area. We have taken command of the Salvation Army here in Frankfurt. My wife and I bring many years of experience. My wife is going on a 30-year Salvation Army officer. She's been an officer longer than I have. I have been here going on 16 years as an officer. But we bring about 46 years of experience together. My wife and I have just moved here from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. We're accustomed to wearing shorts and flip-flops. This was very unusual.
Welcome to snow.
And so we're getting accustomed to that. We actually used to live in Louisville prior to Myrtle Beach, so we're certainly familiar with Kentucky. My youngest daughter was born in Owensboro, and my wife and oldest two are Asbury University graduates. And so we are certainly Kentuckians at heart. We, if I can share a little bit, I don't know how much time I have, but I want to share my testimony. First of all, you need to know that I love the Lord. I love the work that the Lord has given us, and we follow through with that. We feel very confident that the Salvation Army's mission of preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ and meeting human needs in His name without discrimination is the utmost and should be at the forefront of everything we do. And so if you ever come across our work, please know that that's the way we approach it. It's very valuable for us to do that very publicly. I need to get a kidney, and that's part of the reason why we moved here. In Myrtle Beach, I had gotten on the list to get a kidney, and one week later was diagnosed with a melanoma. In South Carolina at the time, once a cancer diagnosis is there, whether you are in remission or not, you are in perpetuity taken off the list of receiving kidney. And so that was a dead end for us in Myrtle Beach. My wife, who is, has a doctorate of education, is an amazing researcher. She researched that there are thousands of patients similar to me who are receiving kidneys up in this part of the country. When we come to Lexington, I can register in five regions simultaneously. It increases my chances. There's no guarantee, but you need to know we are here purposely, and we feel that the Lord brought us here. And so as we approach our work with the Salvation Army, we approach it with that mindset. So when you come to us and ask us for help, know that that's the mindset that we've developed because of this move, and so we value that. We believe strongly in the work of the Salvation Army. We think that the Salvation Army helps people. We think that the Lord changes lives. I've experienced a life change personally, and I would be testimonial, and I would testify to that very specifically. I value that very much. We are entering one of our most public times in the Salvation Army. Everybody's accustomed to us being out at Christmas time. The most iconic symbol of Christmas is this red kettle. You're going to see it everywhere. And it's one way that the Salvation Army raises funds. We depend on public funds to support the public, and that's the way it approaches. And so this is one way that we fundraise, and so we, the Salvation Army has certainly got in the corner of that type of fundraising, and we value that. I think that's a good program, a good fundraising opportunity, and we take full advantage of it as we can. The history of the Salvation Army's kettle, and if you'll allow me to finish with this little history, I'd like you to know the history of it. It began in San Francisco. A captain there in San Francisco was trying to find a way to support the needy, the homeless in the community, and he found that as the ship captains were bringing in their hauls, he might ask them for a donation right on the spot. And so he decided that he would create a pot and put it on fire, and he would ask them to toss in a little bit from their ship. And he developed a term called "keep that pot boiling, keep that pot boiling." And the idea was that they would make the donations, the homeless and the needy would have a way to eat right there in the city of San Francisco. It is that pot, it's that iconic pot that transformed into our iconic red kettle here in the Salvation Army. And so I would encourage the City of Frankfurt, let's keep that pot boiling, and let's keep people fed and working in our community. Friends, we are here to work, and we are here to work alongside you, and we need your help, and I thank you for the opportunity to be able to share that today. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Welcome to Frankfurt.
If you don't mind, I will excuse myself.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
You have a lot of.
You don't want to stay.
We have a lot of thrilling content. You can watch it later. Cable two.
Item number two, we have the Finance Quarterly Update with Amber Morland.
Good afternoon. I'm glad to see everybody again. I'm here for just a quarter one. This is a brief slide. I'm really proud of what the city's done in the last eight, nine months that I've been here. I've seen a lot of progress from leadership, and I've seen the same progress from the department heads and staff. So for our first slide, we're going to see our quarter one revenues. We are up almost $750,000 from quarter one last year. I think, you know, that may sound small to some, but it's a feat in what we're doing here and the accomplishments and goals we're seeking. We're trying to make it easier on business entities, on people paying, and I think it's showing. You know, if they leave us a message, we're calling it all back. If we get an email, it's a, you know, as immediate response as we possibly can. Those revenues in the largest areas we're seeing are in business net profits and withholding. They're up almost 98% from quarter one of last year. Ambulance service is also up along with golf receipts. So those are the primary areas we've seen in quarter one revenues increases. Here's another big number for us. We are down 1.5 million in expenditures for quarter one. You know, that, that's due to monitoring what we're actually spending, increasing efficiencies, and staff and leadership are always looking at ways to navigate, you know, not doing business the way it's always been done, just because it's been done that way. We're looking at those efficiencies. We're monitoring what we're spending. Is that a need? Is that a need or a want? Those type of questions are coming up every time we're looking at something to purchase. Do we absolutely have to have this? What's, you know, what's the return on investment? So the city's looking at a lot of different avenues, and I think it's showing just in quarter one of this fiscal year. Any questions on revenues and expenses so far?
Oh, it's good news.
It is good news. I love sharing good news. Yes.
I like it a lot.
Well, I would just, it's unlikely that pace would continue.
Agreed. Absolutely.
We're going to have 3 million in extra revenue.
Agreed.
No, it's a good even, so we're, let me get this straight. Expenses are 1.5 million dollars lower this quarter compared to the first quarter of last year.
Correct.
So is there any, what was the biggest component?
So expenditures are down in most departments, actually, in most, all departments. A lot of that could be some of the capital expenditures. We're not just approving everything. We're really monitoring what we're spending. We saw huge expense decreases. You've got the sports commission happening, so there's your savings right there. Lakeview Park used to have a budget. It's no longer a city park, you know, we no longer pay for a partial part of that park. Our insurance is down for the quarter. Now, like you said, this may be, there's a lot of different variables in here. The city, the finance department is up because we had a large expenditure in quarter one for open gov. That should level us out for the remainder of the year, but for the most part, every department right now compared to last year, their spending is significantly down. These are, this is our fund balance uses. Of course, you've approved, these are the items that's been approved so far this year. We have approximately 2.3 left for the remainder of the year. That does not include our rainy day funds. Our rainy day funds are still intact in there for savings. This is just the available spending above and beyond that rainy day fund.
Who said first?
This first one is our, our fund balance, starting balance at 3.4, and then these, each one after are the decrease from that original 3.4 estimate, our, our starting fund balance.
Does it say? Go ahead.
I was going to, so the 3.4 is what your estimated surplus?
Yeah, that's our surplus, that's our estimated surplus, and then each of these are approved expenditures.
Does that say flood wall?
Yes, there was a flood actuator that was approved, and, and on that one, that may be FEMA reimbursable.
That's what I was going to.
It could be, yes. We've got it marked.
I was going to ask, we still don't know that, correct?
We still don't know what.
Okay.
I know Rebecca's working pretty hard with department heads on getting alert invoices and getting them marked which category of the FEMA category, so that's an ongoing project.
Can you send this, can you send this?
Yes, absolutely.
I just can't see. I'm over here.
Yes, absolutely. I sure can.
I don't want to keep.
Thanks.
What is the, the High Home Street? Is that just part of the?
That's, that's that High Home Street grant match. I think it was 354,000.
And the landfill agreement is what was last month, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Call and join.
Yeah.
3.0, oh, I'm sorry, 2.3?
Yes.
Okay. This is good. I'm with the mayor, though. I mean, I understand. What's funny is when you do start, you know, I know this, I'm just gonna, you know, I don't, I'm not in your position. I'm just going to use what I know in my home. When you start cutting expenses, you can cut them real fast in the beginning, but at some point you can't.
It's hard to sustain that.
Yeah, you're not going to sustain. I get that. But I think this is a good start, and, and I appreciate you doing this. I have been asked by several people in our community at least a quarterly update. Any organization you go to, I don't want to task you with more work, but I'm just using organizations like I belong to. I belong to the Kentucky Chiefs as an organization. In every meeting, we have, have the finance director come up and give us, hey, what's, what's our, how's our finances doing? So this, this is good, and I think giving our community a good reflection. I will add caution. It's not like that 2.3 million is just out hanging out there. We have, I know from a lot of department heads, we have some capital projects that we're going to have to decide as a, as a board to prioritize and what's important. So I don't want the public to think, oh, yeah, hey, there's just 2.3 million dollars hanging out there for us to spend because we have to operate the city. We got to, my thing, we got to pay the bills.
Exactly. Yeah. Well, and I think that, you know, leading with a strategic plan will help us navigate where those dollars go because that's going to be the city's priorities. So that'll help us focus where our dollars need to go.
Good. Good.
Thank you. Is that it?
Is that it? So compared to the previous presentation earlier this spring, this seems like a, well, a turnaround.
I think, I think we've, we've turned a corner. Absolutely.
And doesn't seem like we had to do that much to do that, just.
We did a little hard work, but.
And we still have other levers that we can.
We do.
Put in place in 2026 that are not even tax or fee increases.
Agreed, yes.
There are other things. So I'm, that's optimistic, and I'm.
I'm excited about those.
I'm optimistic, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, we have the 2026 Parks Proposed Rates from Parks Director Sean Pickens.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
All right. Do you, y'all have copies of this? Did they get copies of this, or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, it's a lot of numbers and a lot of stuff, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but if you have any questions, please either stop me, or you can ask at the end. First of all, this has been reviewed by the Parks Advisory Board and has been unanimously recommended by the advisory board for these rates for this year. No major changes, but I'll go through them real quick here for you. Shelters and Pavilions at several of our parks, we're not recommending any change from last year. It made a little bit of an increase last year. This is, this is pretty industry standard and right in line with all the parks in our surrounding areas. Athletic field rentals, just a minor change there. $5 more there for practices for fields per day, and then $150 for games and tournaments. Again, this is pretty, right about the norm. If you go to any surrounding community, this is about what you pay. Some programs here, tennis and pickleball. So there's four different tennis youth quick start. We're just recommending here a $5 increase on the youth, quick start, as well as the beginner and intermediate. Mainly just, everything's more expensive. Tennis balls, equipment, payroll for our instructors has gone up a little bit, so we've just done a minor increase there. Rookie went from $0 to $10. The main reason for that, if you're curious why we were at zero and went up to 10, was we have a lot of people sign up and then not show up, so we had vacancies where we could have signed people up. So we're thinking a little bit of a, little bit of a charge will make them more inclined to come, so. And then we didn't change our low and intermediate for pickleball there. Aquatic Center, daily admission and we're not, and group rate, Twilight, we're not recommending any change. We made a significant increase last year there at the Aquatic Center for this year. We also made some policy updates for, for safety, and so we just kind of want to let, let things ride right now. We're, we're on the higher end for admission fees for aquatic centers in the area, for sales Georgetown. So we're already at the high end of the spectrum, so we feel like we're in a good spot. Season passes, no change there. We actually sold, we increased this last year, and we sold just as many, actually a little bit, a few more this year than we did last year. So we're not recommending any change there. And we are adding the morning program pass. So in the morning before we open up for the public, we have lap swim, senior aerobics, and different activities there, swim lessons. So we're, we're adding, that's a pass. So, but you could either pay the daily admission to go, or you could pay an entire season pass. So since they're just kind of getting in the morning, some of them don't come in the afternoon and swim with the public. So we got some feedback that they wanted just a pass, just to come in and do the aerobics. So, so we're recommending $60 for that. This is the rentals and aerobics and lessons. So private rentals, again, all these, we're not recommending any change from last year. We did make a significant increase in private rentals last year, even with, I think last year they were maybe 5, 550 or 600 dollar range. We went up to 1,000. We still, we still were sold out by March. So moving up to $1,000 did not affect at all our private rentals. So, and again, I mentioned in previous, private rentals are expensive for us to run. We have to fully staff the place and so, but making such a huge increase last year, we're not recommending any changes this year. Rest of it there, group lessons, private lessons, that's all pretty industry standard for, for those items. Moving into the golf course, so the items highlighted there in yellow are what we're proposing to change and increase. So the column there obviously is the 2025 rates, then the, the second and fourth column are 2006 for this recommending that we're going towards. So $2 increase for 18 holes with cart, and then also nine holes with cart up $2. Then weekends, which is our peak time for daily play, going up $4 on the holes with the carts. Our cart expense, maintenance on the carts, we were able, last year, to able to get half the fleet replaced. So we're hoping in the very near future to get the other half of the fleet replaced as soon as we can. But maintenance and upkeep on those, the cost is continually going up. So we're trying to keep up, and you'll see comparison to other golf courses here in just a second. So we're still even with this. We're in the middle of the road. Yes, sir.
Is, are these rates for just, it's just for anyone? Doesn't matter if you're city, county resident, it's, it's.
Correct.
They're just, it doesn't, not like the Aquatic Center.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The season passes, so we're recommending a $50 increase on season passes across the board, and those are the various different passes that you're able to purchase. Then on the column there on the right, that's if you were, you can get a greens fee and no cart. Some people would just walk and not use a cart. So that's the greens fee. If they were just walking, that's unlimited golf during the year. And if they wanted to add the cart lease, that's how much additional is. And those numbers on the right is if you bought both of them combined together. I know I'm skipping through these pretty quick, but if you need me to go back, please feel free to. Greens, this is for special events and activities. So if you, a group comes and wants to have a fundraiser at the course.
Like the Chamber?
Yeah, like the Chamber events and different things like that. We do give for nonprofit organizations, like the Chamber or different groups. So again, 2025 rates versus 26 rates, just recommending there a $2 increase. So this still gives them a discount. If just you and I went and played just a normal round of golf, they still get a discount per person here, and the more players they have, the cheaper it is for them to play. This is just a real quick comparison. So these are courses in the general vicinity of Frankfurt, some in Georgetown, some in Shelby County, Oldham County, Richmond, Nicholasville. So you can see the past two or three years, we've, we've made some price increases, and we were pretty low on the list. Now we're getting up there into that middle, middle of the road. So we're not, you know, we're not the most expensive, but we're also not the least. We still have some, you know, some updates and upgrades that we want to make and need to make on the course. So we're, we're right there. We're not crazy. We're right there with the communities surrounding us, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know.
You're fine.
Well, out of those up, can you tell me, now it looks like Louisville, those are municipal courses?
Yes.
Who other than Louisville has municipal courses than us?
Lakeside is a municipal course. Those, those two, the Lexington courses right above us are municipal. Y-Singer's municipal in Shelbyville.
Okay.
I believe, I believe Eagle Creek is in Oldham County. I think Thoroughbred is. I think the only one is Cherry Blossom there at the top. I think they're, they're a private course, or at least a semi-private. Longview, Gibson Bay, those are both municipal courses.
Okay.
And Kane Wood down there, they're a semi-private. They're kind of a residential slash, they're a public-private golf course.
Okay.
So. These are the cart ra, these are the combined cart rates and what, season passes, sorry. If you were to get a season pass and a cart, this is kind of where we end up again, right there, kind of in the middle of the road. So we're incrementally increasing prices on, on all those to get us more in line with the surrounding communities, but also to try to increase our revenues. As Amber had just mentioned, our golf receipts are up some for this year. So we're heading in the right direction. And that's all I have. I will be glad to take any other questions. Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question about other municipal golf courses around us. Do they have other revenue streams that we don't? Like, do they sell alcohol and food?
Yes. I, I don't really know all the specifics or what all, what you do. You know, some of them, some of them are set up like we are, where the golf, the golf pro who's running the pro shop takes on that revenue, but they also take on that expense as well.
Right.
You know, so, so I think it's just kind of a mixed bag. In general, the industry standard is the golf pro, just like we have, kind of runs the food and beverage and the alcohol, and to have that as, and the golf lessons for that additional revenue. But like I mentioned, we don't have that expense, so, you know, kind of it.
And then I was thinking about the Aquatic Center and if there were any additional ways to look at revenue there. Like, I know.
Yeah.
I maybe sent something last season where I saw, maybe it was Georgetown or somebody else was doing like birthday parties during the day.
Yeah.
Maybe there was an indoor space that we could host those, or, I don't know, just little things like that.
We have thought about that, but we don't really have the indoor space.
Okay.
The biggest indoor space is where our ticket administrators are selling tickets to the public.
So that's totally.
Yeah, the cash registers right there and everything. That's our biggest, like, open room that could fit at least a 20-person birthday party. They'd have to be outside somewhere, and when the, when the pool's at capacity, there's, you can't, you can't find a place to sit now. So, you know, maybe in the future, there might be a way to, you know, expand the, expand, build a room somewhere.
Yeah.
That could host more parties and have some additional rentals. But with the current facility there now, there's just not, there's just really not a good place for that.
I hear. Thank you.
So, yeah, we're kind of, additional revenue, maybe additional programming, but then we're just so tight. You know, we're, from 5 o'clock from the daylight to dark, I mean, it's cram-packed with swimming lessons and aerobics and daily play, and then party rentals at night. We do have a few night swims that we do continue to, we do plan to continue to have.
People love that this season.
Yeah.
I mean, I heard nothing but positive things. So that was great.
We plan to continue with those, so.
My question, so the private rentals, we increased it from 750 to 1,000 and didn't have any effect. Did it still sold out by March?
Yes.
Do you know where it sold out when it was, what month it sold out?
Oh.
When it was 750, about the same time?
About the same. Yeah. We'll start getting calls, we put these new rates going to effect. We start renting facilities January 1, and we're.
And I don't want to, it's just economics, though. I mean, if we went to 1250, then how much more would that generate in revenue? People are, if there's that much demand for it.
Yeah.
I don't know why we wouldn't increase it, except that we want to be, you know, we don't want to be greedy on this, but.
Yeah.
But we have to charge what it's worth.
Yeah. Georgetown, I believe, they, they charge $1,200 for their outdoor pool.
How many nights do we have the private rentals in a regular season?
About fif, about forty-five, give or take. Because we have a few night swims thrown in there, plus we have several swim meets on Wednesday nights. So I think we have at least four of those and we have at least four or five night swims. We have about, I mean, five days a week. So that's, that's too many, probably, probably closer to thirty, five days a week, so.
So just going to two, twelve fifty, we're, we're talking an increase of over ten thousand dollars in
Yeah.
in revenue.
Yeah.
And then on the, I guess the thinking behind charging Aquatics Center guests, county, non-city residents higher rates, but not the golf course, what, what's the difference in thinking there?
The, the majority, not the majority, a lot of play at the golf course is out of town. And it's for tur, it's, it's, it's driving a lot of tourism to the community. So we didn't want to charge more for tourism coming out of the side of the community, trying to draw them in to the golf course. Was the main difference.
If I were explaining it to a taxpayer who doesn't golf in Frankfurt, like why, why do, you know, we're subsidizing that.
Right.
Or if they, if they do golf, you know, that's more importantly, if they do golf, they, they help subsidize that with tax dollars, so.
Yeah.
That I can maybe explain with its, its driving tourism.
It's driving tourism, yeah. Where the, where the Aquatics Center is, we do get some out of town people that come, but ninety, ninety-five percent of the Aquatics Center use is here in Frankfurt, Franken County, so.
Is there any other discussion or questions for Mr. Pickett?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
I'm curious, do we know roughly as far as operating costs for the golf course? What it costs us to have an individual play a round of golf? And I'm thinking, you know, big view there is if like, you just take your operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, or excuse me, previous completed years and look at the rounds of golf and just do the math and say, okay, it costs us X per person to be here.
Yeah.
To operate. I'm just wondering, you know, what does it actually cost us to have a round of golf?
Yeah.
You know, between everything, the upkeep, the, the chemicals, the irrigation.
Our, our expenses are around nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And we have about anywhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand rounds a year. Rounds of golf, roughly. Good year, bad year, bad year's around twenty, a good year, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. That's what we've been averaging for a long time, so.
So forty-five dollars?
Yeah.
Forty if it's twenty-two and a half.
How much?
If it's twenty-two thousand five hundred people, it's forty dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've not broken down the math like this, but
Right.
we do know, we do, we do pretty close know how many rounds we have. And we do know what the operating expenses are, so.
That's right about where you're at right now.
Yeah.
Share another little
Which, which is the reason why we're, we're right there kind of in the middle of the road with everybody else.
I saw a fun fact online recently that said Kentucky golfers drink more beer than a lot of other states. So I'm just saying, revenue stream, I don't know. I'm not sure we allow people to bring coolers, we probably do, but I don't know, just something I read recently.
It just, alcohol gets a little
Well
Gets a little tricky selling it, being silly, but
You can't bring a col, your own
Let me add to that real quick, Commissioner Wells.
You have to buy it from the pro shop.
That would also, I'm assuming if we got into that, and, and I'm, hey, I'm one of those, I'm one of those golfers. But I'm assuming that would kick in or maybe some higher insurance. Am I, yeah, and, and that may not offset.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, we, you know, we've tossed around, it's been a while. We've tossed around trying to do some renovations up there to offer like a small cafe and serve alcohol and whatever. It was just, that, that pro shop is from the fifties, you know. So we, to have something that would attract something to really, first of all, it'd be a lot of expense to renovate and get it to where it would be attractive. You know, it'd be a pretty big undertaking with the current facility to, I mean, yeah, we could sell a few beers, obviously, yeah. But to really make it attractive to get some real revenue, I, I think it would take a considerable capital investment on our end, you know, to get it to that level. Plus then you got to staff it and all that too, so.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
And then I, I've, I've heard about the irrigation system up there being
Yeah, it's
old.
Yeah, it's in rough shape.
What, what are we looking at there in terms of a cost to really
You really want to know?
I think so.
Lay, lay it on.
Well, it's upward, it's, it'll be above a million dollars to put a new irrigation system out there. We're, we currently, we had a study done, we had a company come in that's just replaced multiple irrigation. Y-Singer in Shelbyville, they just replaced theirs. They've done several state parks, they're doing some of them right now. And on average, they're looking at one point five to two million dollars, give or take, for an eighteen-hole golf course for an, on the irrigation system, so. And we're, this, the one that's there currently is from nineteen fifty-seven, so it's a little old. It's the original one that was put in when the course was built, so. So there goes your budget, Amber.
Well. Wait a minute, I think there's probably a lot of people. There's probably a lot of people back there telling you to stand in line.
I, I know, I, I know, I'm just kidding.
I know that, I know. I say that jokingly, but, 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 but I think the mayor makes a good point. Is, I don't think none of us, I, I've had a lot of people approach me about the golf course, even when the rates went up a few dollars. And they're upset, but it is a quality of life thing for our community, but it is an expensive quality of life thing. And I think that is important that the community knows, hey, you know, like you, you said what, nineteen fifties?
Yeah.
Our irrigation, I mean, my goodness.
Yeah.
I mean, where are you going to get seventy-five years of service out of anything, right? I mean, that's like, I don't know who built that.
Yeah.
And my guess would be the new one will not get seventy-five.
Yeah, probably not, probably not.
But my point being is, I think it's important for the public to know that, because I've had several people approach me and I'm like, do you even know how the golf course operates and what we operate at, right? Meaning i- it's not a money maker, right?
No, no.
And, and, but again, I understand the quality of life thing. So I, I appreciate the mayor putting that out. I mean, yeah, stand, get in line.
No, I know, I know, so.
Anyone else? All right, and without any objection, look to have that on the committee meeting?
Yeah, yeah, next week. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor, staff would request that item number four be at least tabled until the December work session for us to prepare better for that.
Any objection to that, or did anybody want to make a motion to?
We'll make a motion, table it.
All right, motion and a second to table discussion item number four, the draft, so are proposed changes. And I'll take voice, vote on that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will table that to December.
December work session, yes, please. And item number five, we have the shooting range discussion with Chief Napier and Assistant Chief Tracy.
Hello, so just want to talk to you all about the police range. I know some questions that came up about that. Want to share a little, little history of it, some ordinances, things like that, make sure you, we have plenty of time for questions. So the police department's range, it's at thousand one Ballinob Road. It was built before nineteen seventy and it was operated by the Kentucky State Police until sometime in the, in the nineteen eighties. And then it was transferred to the Frankfurt Police Department. We use the range to train our, our officers in proper firearm handling and shooting their assigned duty weapons and all the, the weapon syst, weapon systems that the specialized units have. We use it for our qualifications. Those qualification standards are set by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council. And there's actually Kentucky state laws governing how often that we have to qualify and that we do have to qualify, things like that. There are other agencies that use our range. And we have five open range days per month that, that's us. And then on top of that, we have seven to ten days in May for day qualifications. And when I say day qualifications, that's each weapon system. So we have to qualify on our handguns, we have to qualify, qualify on rifles. The specialized teams, they have to qualify on their weapon systems as well. We have another seven to ten days in October for low light qualifications, including the makeup days. So this time of year, of course, it starts getting dark earlier. That way we can do our, our low light qualifications or our nighttime qualifications earlier. And, and we're not out there at, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night shooting guns. So that's why we stagger things that way. Our tactical response unit, they also use the range, one to two days per month. Franklin County Sheriff's Office, two to four days per month for their training qualifications. That includes their, their daytime and low light training. The Kentucky State Police Academy, thirty days for recruit classes throughout the year. Kentucky State Police Executive Security, the governor's detail uses the range forty days per year. The Kentucky State Police Special Response Team is twenty-five days. Kentucky State Police Facility Security is nineteen days. Kentucky State Police Criminal Investigations, two days. Alcohol beverage control, two days. Homeland Security, three days. Jefferson Town Police Department, seventeen days. The Attorney General's Office has a day. Administrative Office of Court Security has a day. Boone National Guard Special Law Enforcement Officers have four days. Norse Tactical, which is a training company, we host a training with them each year for one day. U.S. Marshal Service, one day. Franklin County Regional Jail, one day. Kentucky State University Police Department, one day. But of those, that's eighteen, eighteen entities that are using our range. Of those, the Kentucky State Police, more specifically, the Kentucky State Police Training Academy, they do range backstop maintenance for us. They provide targets, staples, staplers, brass catchers, things like that, that we use on the range. Franklin County Sheriff's Office is the same thing. They help with range maintenance, targets, target backers and the sticks to hold the targets up. Staples, Jefferson, Jefferson Town PD, J-Town. They, brooms for cleanup, dust pans, brass catchers, range shooting equipment. And the jail provides maintenance work at the range for us as well. We do, we make sure, and we've made sure for, for years now, that we comply with the, with the ordinance about noise regulations, which is ten at night to seven AM, that there's not supposed to be, you know, the loud noise. But actually in the ordinance, it, we're actually exempt from that. In, in subsection E, or, or, I'm sorry, section E subsection three, it says that noises resulting from any authorized emergency vehicle or law enforcement training facilities and provided that the foregoing acts of noises are not considered as excluding and other acts and noises which offend the public peace. So we're actually exempt from it, but we make sure, and we make sure that everybody that uses our range, I mean, they've been told if you want to use our range, you have to start after seven AM and you have to be finished before ten PM. And, and everybody has honored that. That has came into question a couple of times. We've actually, you know, checked cameras and stuff down there at the garage and, and there was no shooting on our range at all, which brings into, there is another range in that area, there's the Benson Valley Range, there's the Sportsman's Club. So any, any shooting that's taking place outside of those hours, we can confirm it is not coming from the police department's range. Just so we could see how much noise is traveling into the downtown area, we actually, the assistant chief and I, we, we got a decimeter and went downtown. And we had some guys at the range and said, hey, fire your rifle, fire your handgun, so we could kind of get a baseline reading. Now, the thing is, this was today at one thirty PM, there's a lot of traffic downtown during that time. You know, while I was trying to get the baseline at St. Clair Miro, there was a concrete truck that drove by. So my low was a decibel reading of sixty point seven, my high was eighty-four point five, that's when that concrete truck went by. But, you know, that was our range. So when we started firing the rifle, it, 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 the high and low at that moment was between sixty point two and seventy point four. So still a lot, a lot quieter than just what some of the cars were that were driving by. With our handguns, it was sixty-six point three and sixty-eight point four. So again, you know, if you've ever looked at a decimeter, tried to take that, like it, it fluctuate, like they're very sensitive. And so the wind blowing, cars driving by, that's why we were trying to get a baseline. We went over to Broadway and did the same thing. And again, our baseline, the high side was seventy-nine point three, the low side was sixty-five point six. When we fired the rifles, it peaked at seventy-one point one, the low side was sixty-nine. Pistols, seventy-six point nine at that moment on the high side, sixty-eight point seven on the low side. So even when we were firing the weapons, I mean, it really didn't, it really didn't peak over what just the flow of, the noise that the flow of traffic was creating. Now, that was today. Today, it's cold, it's windy, it's snow. And those things, they impact how sound travels, they do. So, you know, on a nice, on a nice clear day, when it's warmer outside, it, and the wind's not blowing like, like it is today, it's probably going to be a little bit different. But I'm still pretty confident that, I mean, you can hear the stuff, but it's not, it, it's not any louder than just what baseline noise is in the downtown area, at least during the day. Now, it's dead quiet at night, it, it's, it's probably going to show itself a little bit more. But we're, we're not shooting at night, at least not, not after ten PM. We did go a little further when this came up before, and we actually reached out to, to an engineering firm just to see if there was a way that, that we could control some of the sound, especially going into the downtown area. Because we had no idea that when the tower came down, what a difference that it was going to make. And for, for those of us that's been here a long time, you know, when the tower was still standing, you could shoot and you could actually hear the sound hit the tower and come back. So it, it did reflect a lot of that sound and prevent it from going into a lot of the downtown area. But the tower's not there anymore, so we thought, well, what can we do about it? So the assistant chief actually reached out to the engineering firm, he spoke to them. I'll, I'll let him share his findings and what they said.
Afternoon. So I spoke with, called out, I actually got some references on who to speak to. And Mitch Green, who is a, I believe he's executive vice president at Hayworth, Meyer and Bowlin, actually talked to him for a while about it. He's got extensive experience in the design of highways and airports. And of course, that comes along with sound, sound projection and abatement analysis. I mean, everybody, they drive down the interstate, we all see the, the measures that go on. And he, also Mitch has been a resident of Frankfurt for over thirty years. So when I brought up the range, he said, I know exactly where you're talking about. I know exactly where that's at. So just with his experience in, in, in engineering and knowledge of our local topography, kind of his opinion on it was that it was an insurmountable and fundamental challenge that the geography with the land that encompasses the range basically said that the firing range situated in this deep, you know, natural depression where it is, the unique topography creates a complex acoustic environment. Instead of dissipating, sound from the range reverberates and is projected upward and outward, echoing off the surrounding hillsides and scattering unpredictably over a wide area. And according to his opinion, standard sound abatement measures such as sound absorbing barriers, berms or walls would be fun, functionally ineffective. The sound would simply roll over any feasible barrier and continue to echo, failing to provide any meaningful relief to adjacent areas. And just basically, just based on his assessment, assessment, we just kind of concluded as far as like any kind of structure that we could put up, that there's no feasible or effective engineering solution. And, you know, and that's coming straight from somebody who knows what they're talking about in this. Basically, he gave me two options. He said, put it indoors or move it Basically, he gave me two options. He said, put it indoors or move it. That was, that's the answer. You know, there's just nothing we can do down there. And, you know, short of building another 28-story, 300-some off the building.
And then, you know, taking those two recommendations that he had, moving it or building an indoor range, you know, we started trying to do an estimated cost breakdown of what something like that would cost. And so an indoor range, and again, we have 15 shooting lanes down there. So we could, we could make a smaller range, and it would be on the lower side of this, or going with, not even a range the size that we have, because right now we can shoot at 100 yards. But going with 15 lanes, we were between 9.2 million and 16.2 million for an indoor facility. And then the annual operating cost, that it gets pretty expensive because lead and powder and OSHA regulations and everything that comes with that, filters, there's advanced filtration systems because you have all that stuff, that's considered hazardous materials that would be indoors at that point. It's very costly to operate an indoor range. There's, there's very few police departments that have them. I believe Louisville Metro has one. Isn't it Louisville? And, and they, I know that some places that have them stopped using them because it was just, it was, it costs too much to maintain them. So I think that option is probably out. And then the other option is we move the range. But then where are we going to move it to? We would have to find a piece of property that's for sale, purchase the property, build the facilities back. And I mean, that's, that's almost an unknown, how much that would cost. But I would, I would say, you know, by the time, all the fees and probably 3 million on the low side, you know, to
I'm sorry.
No, no. It is, it is. But to go back with, with, I mean, it may be less than that, but by the time that you find the property and then you have to have a berm, you have to have something to, to stop what we're shooting and set up the things there. And then, you know, if we had a building on it, we have a building on our range right now. It's not the best one in the world, but there is a building on it. We have some storage buildings on it. And then trying to have access to restrooms, you know, things like that. When you start talking about putting that stuff in a, in a new range, it gets quite costly very quick. And then, you know, everybody I know that has a range, Shelby, Shelby County said that they get complaints about their range, and theirs is, is out in the county. Lexington gets, theirs is close to the airport, but they still get complaints about their range. So I think if we were serious about investing the money to move it somewhere else, or looking at another alternative, we're just going to, we're going to move the complaint, is what my fear is. We're going to spend a whole lot of money to move the same complaint somewhere else.
I appreciate the information. And it's definitely, I appreciate just the transparency behind it, to be honest. Because, I mean, I heard it recently, and I thought about our conversation the last meeting. And I think it's just something that, I mean, based off these numbers you just gave me, I mean, it just doesn't seem really feasible right now to do that. So it's, I feel like it's something that we just need to keep the community in the know about. Maybe we, I mean, I'm not sure if there's somewhere that you all have these hours posted for the community to know. And also the Benson Range, I'm not familiar with that area in particular. But maybe we need to be more transparent about these times that you all are, you all and the 18 other entities that utilize it very frequently. Just maybe keeping those posted somewhere, just so people can just be able to reference to it. But that was just my only comment. But thank you for the information.
Well.
Commissioner Unger.
Yeah, I just also want to say thank you. I appreciate the time, the information. It's all good for, for me. And I think for people that are listening to here, because, you know, I get random texts. I'm like, yeah, I hear it too. Let me just check in and see what's going on. And that's really the biggest concern is the, you know, the noise issue. But then, you know, people need to understand why we need it, why it's important for our department and for safety for our community. So like Commissioner Smith Willis touched on, just communication. I don't know exactly what that looks like to make it, to help the community understand more, but, but that would be very important. And then I don't, you're talking about like an indoor range. I understand that sounds insane. Nothing that we could ever imagine doing. But I heard KSP was working on an indoor facility up at the Coffee Tree Road. Is that anything that any of these other entities would possibly use? Or is it just for KSP?
Well, I can't speak for them on who they're going to let use it, but I believe that's a 25-meter range is what they're doing, which is fine for, for handguns. So our handgun qualification goes back to that distance. But rifles are significantly louder than handguns. That is not suitable for rifles, and they would still be utilizing our range for rifles. So, you know, it would maybe lessen some of the frequency that they're down there, because then they could then handle the handgun stuff at their facility. But it doesn't completely solve our problem. It may help, but it doesn't really solve the whole problem.
Okay. And then I was sort of wondering, and I don't know if Laura, it might be something you, but like the, with the 18 entities, are those MOUs just through the police department with the other entities? Or is that something, I mean, it's never come to us to review or see, but
That is true, and that's a good question. I'm not sure how we do that.
I mean, this, they've been using the range, I think, my whole career. So I don't, I don't know. Do you have a clue?
I know, I know a lot. I know a lot. I know more about the range than most people sitting here.
So, I mean, a lot of the stuff, it's just, it's been established, these partnerships have been established for a long time. And I know, here's one example here recently, is the Kentucky State Police is doing a little better financially than we are, and they're buying a new piece of armor for their SWAT team, for their tactical team. And so they actually reached out to us and said, hey, would you all like our, our old one? You know, we'll give it to you. And this was, I spoke to the Commissioner himself, and he said, we have a really good relationship with you all, and you all let us use your range all the time. It's the least we could do. So, I mean, they recognize that they do take, I won't say take advantage of, but they use our facilities, and they understand that. But then they turn around and give us a piece of equipment that, I mean, it is older, it's used. But if we were to buy a new one, it's a $300,000 piece of equipment that they're, they're giving us. And he specifically said, you know, we have a really good relationship with you all, and you all let us use your, your range all the time. So I think that those partnerships, they do help.
We should probably formalize them.
Yeah.
And so thank you. I mean, I think just
Yeah, I mean, I'm whatever we need to do.
A little on the MOUs. The way this all began, KSP, when they controlled the range, was our property. Chief Evans was the chief then, and I'm not sure what happened. I don't know how it all stemmed, but everyone that uses the range has to have insurance, right? And that's what happened. And what happened was, there was some conversations with the state. I don't know what happened, but we took the range back over. And for a while, state police didn't use our range. And then they came back and started using our range because things, the relationship was mended. Again, I was not in what I call an administrative position then. I was just a, just a simple patrol officer back in the good day. But since then, what has happened with the range is a lot of agencies use it. They should have an MOU because we need to make sure they're insured. That was the big thing. So I would recommend that, to make sure of that. And I'm sure a lot of these places were using the range prior to you being chief.
Long before.
I know.
I mean, I was a patrolman when these places were
And I imagine John Fields runs the range, correct? He manages the range. So, and again, that's, you know, probably one of the most important things I want to point out is, you know, and I love that Commissioner Unger mentioned this, that we need it for our department. Other agencies use this. But it's safe to say, and I know this, and you know this, but is it, is it a fair statement to say 60 to 70% of all shootings happen in low light or night when it comes to law enforcement? The reason that is, all right, that statistically, we know that. Back, and you probably know this, Laura, that's, that's why it's written into law now, that we have low light qualification. For years, when I first became a police officer here, all the qualification was done during the day. We really didn't shoot at night a lot. We really didn't. And then nobody hardly shot at night on the range. So what I see has happened is basically through times of data coming back to us of officer-involved shootings happening at nighttime, anywhere from, it depends on what source you use, 67%. They've realized that you can shoot all day during the daylight you want, but it's no different in sports, right? You practice, you practice like you're going to play. And that's why this low light has really become. And then, you know, the 10:00 p.m. is, when I was there, you struggle because it stays daylight to almost 11 o'clock in the dead of summer. So they skirt with that the best they can. So I think it's important. And again, I, I don't, I don't, I think, I love Assistant Chief Tracy. That sound's got to go somewhere. There's no way, and even in an indoor range, it affects the ammunition you can use. You can't just use any ammunition. You have to use non-fragging ammo. It's different. Most, the most expensive ammunition, the reason I say that is because Department of Criminal Justice just built a new, brand-new indoor range. And I think, I don't know, I could text Chief, or Chief Bossy, Director Bossy real quick, and I think it was in the excess of $30 million. So these indoor ranges are very expensive. In fact, very few states even have indoor ranges for their general academy.
I have a family member who's into HVAC with, and he actually, I talked to him about the HVAC system. And it's a very specialized system to filter out this lead. And he said that just the maintenance on them is just a whole nother level. And it's, you know, it has to be done all the time. And when you're in there shooting, there's like a, I guess, a switch you flip. It has to be constantly running just because of the lead. So, I mean, there's, it, it's a whole other level when you're going indoor.
We actually, we were, I think it was our Glock Armors course that we were hosting, but there was a gentleman from one of the sheriff's offices in Florida, and they have an indoor range. And we spoke to him about it, and his recommendation was, do not build an indoor range. I mean, that, that was from somebody that used it. He just, because of the expense, and the money has to come from somewhere. And I know right now, we don't have the money to pull from somewhere else to, to spend on an indoor range. We don't at the police department. You know, I wish that there, I wish I came up here and had a great solution for you, for you all, but I, I don't. I just kind of wanted to lay the, the information that we've gathered out there for you, just so everybody was on the, on the same page. We do the best that we can with it. Like I said, we, we do the low light qualifications in the fall just because it gets dark earlier. So we can qualify and be out of there by, you know, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock.
I'd like to add, well, I appreciate you all giving it, giving us the information. I think this is long overdue. It's something I get complaints about fairly regularly from constituents about the downtown noise. I know I forward a lot of those emails to city manager. And I will say, you know, as someone who lives downtown, and I appreciate the noise study, and, but it does stand out when it's at night. You know, not at 10, not past 10. I'm talking 7:00, 8:00, or 9:00 o'clock. It stands out because you don't have that other noise that blocks it out. And, and it is a different sound, even if it's during the day. This isn't a, a truck driving by or a train going by. These are gunshots. And, and, you know, even if you know what that is, in this day and age, when you hear a semi-automatic gunfire going off, you just don't know. You question it. And that's for the people who live here. Now, if you're a tourist or a visitor to our capital city, if you're on the Berman Trail, and you hear that, do you know that there's a gun range nearby? You don't know that. And you, you don't know what's going on. So I think the, you know, the collective blood pressure of everybody who lives in the area that hears it, even when it's going on, I don't know what it goes up. But it's, it's not, it's just not good for the quality of life. So I understand about the cost and how it seems prohibitive. But what I hear is that we're one of 18 or one of 19 agencies that use this gun range. So I think we would, you know, I'd like to see what those numbers are, the number of days that we actually use it compared to the others. And I think it's a proportionate. I think it's not fair to our residents who do have to put up with it. And I know it's needed, and I'm not saying it's not. And I, and I support, you know, we have to have that training. I know that. But I think it's just not fair for our residents to burden that on behalf of J-Town, who I think by all accounts is the most, has the most money of, well, they're up there in the state of Kentucky. If they're, I don't know exactly what those numbers are, but anecdotally, I hear that they, they compete well for other officers because of their benefits and their salaries. So why are they coming down here to use our shooting range? And we have to listen to their gunshots? So why can't they build their own? And if the state of Kentucky and their officers, and whether it's K-State or the governor's detail, or KSP, I think that's where we would go, looking for the money to do this somewhere else or build an indoor facility. That's my take on that. Commissioner Smith Willis.
I just had, and I was thinking about that earlier when Commissioner Unger brought up the MOUs. And I was thinking about when I was in Citizens Police Academy, and just being out there at the range. I mean, it does need a lot of, I mean, needs a lot of, a lot of maintenance. It needs a lot. I mean, it could use a facelift, to be honest, and I use that very lightly. But even when I was out there, I was like, this is where I'll practice it. So like, I do think, and I say that jokingly, but I mean, seriously, for, for the needs of these 18 entities, and then for our own officers here in Frankfort, especially for low light shooting, I would want them to at least have the most accurate form of training. So I just feel like with all 18 people that utilize this, this shooting range, and depending on how often we use it versus them, I do think it's something, we're circling back to the MOUs to see how people can be held responsible or accountable in terms of financially, and then also just maintenance upkeep, and then back to insurance. So I think it's worth just maybe expanding on this conversation a little bit more, just so it's not falling at the foot of the city of Frankfort, this PD, so.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of it is state agencies. I mean, they're, they're using it, besides us, they're using it the most days. Like I said, they do help us out with, with a lot of the range maintenance and fixing the berms and, you know, providing targets and, and things like that. So it's not like they're, they're not doing anything for us. Because they, they do. It's a good partnership. I mean, we, we do have a range. I mean, a lot of agencies don't have their own range, so we are fortunate to have that. And like, you know, we talked about in the strategic plan earlier today, and we talked about training facilities, like, I mean, we could really take advantage of the fact that we have a lot of this stuff here, which is a luxury to us. I know, you know, for some downtown residents, it might not seem like much of a luxury for us to have a firing range here. But as far as, as our profession goes, it is nice that we have our own range, and we can operate our, our own range. And, you know, I've not minded helping other agencies out. And, and they're appreciative of it. Like I said, the state, they do help out. The sheriff's office does help out. But I mean, we just may have to revisit those, those, those conversations and what that looks like. But I, I mean, if we, even if we charged them to use our range, and I'm not advocating that we do that, the problem that we're here talking about is the noise downtown and people complaining. If we're getting money for it, it's not fixing the problem downtown and people are complaining. We're just making money off people complaining. And I, I'm not, I'm not going to stand up here and advocate for that. You know what I mean? If, if the problem is that the people downtown are, are burdened by the range, us making money off of it doesn't, doesn't fix that burden. You know what I mean? It just, because I don't think we're going to make enough money off of it to build a new range, you know, so I, I don't know. I just, that's my, my hesitation with, hey, I'm going to charge you to use the range. Because it's not, it's not going to generate enough revenue to, to fix the problem that we have at hand. And we still have, we still have the problem. We're just making money off the problem. And I just, on a personal level, I don't want to make money off of a problem.
That's valid.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, obviously, you, you know how I feel about it. I mean, I know that complaints come, but I get complaints about Boon Guard. I got pictures fall off my wall all the time from the Blackhawks. And you know what I tell them? That's the sound of freedom. And here's one we'll tell you.
And here's one I'll tell you. I understand that range makes noise, but I don't wanna put our police chief or our assistant chief, I know what those agencies do for our agency, and it's gonna be a, a really rough call. Chief Sanders, Colonel Sanders, no, no pun intended.
He was, he was Kentucky State Police.
He was, he was Commissioner State Police, and I know how much the state police, if J-Town had a class, read interview techniques, if they had a class now, tomorrow, that they hosted, those classes run eight hundred to a thousand dollars to put someone in. I guarantee you, J-Town would give us four or five seats for free. I know they would. That's four thousand dollars. And the reason they'll do that is because of our range. That's kinda hand-in-hand how things go in law enforcement, is you help us out, we will do the best to extend that, you know, reciprocal agreement, or however we can help you out, just like the state police. And I understand it is a burden on downtown, but some things have happened, like I said, I, I think the complaints have come more because of the tower coming down. I mean, that was out of our control. And yes, the state police is building a range. So I can tell you that where their range is gonna sit, we're gonna get more complaints from residents and people shooting guns. I mean, that's just, I hate it, but, you know, it, it's, it's the nature of the beast, so to speak, when you have that. So, you know, they've done it on the times, I, I don't know, and again, I agree with you, Mayor, a little bit, when it gets colder, the way that the, the noise travels, if you ever have been on Home Street at 2:00 AM in the morning, like I have, I mean, you can hear a pin drop all the way down from the Thornhill Bypass to High Homs Amira. I mean, it's just, you can't. But I'm not in a position, I'm not in favor of, of, you know, I think we have eighteen agencies use it. I think we do need to make sure that we're covered under our insurance, that, that I think, the liability aspect of it, I don't think the city should be on the hook of that. But I think agencies that use our range, I think it makes for a good relationship for our police department, as well as our, our officers, and the training aspect of it. There's a lot of stuff out there with firearms training, especially Norris Group, I'm very familiar with that tactical group, they use our range quite a bit. I think they provide a lot of training for our, our agency for free, and it's a very costly training, if I'm not mistaken. And we also have special units. We have a response unit, a tactical response unit that uses the range. Quite a few of those agencies in there use our range, I know, so, which keeps their other communities safe. I think it's part of the responsibility of any government entity. First and foremost is to protect the citizen's range, and I understand that we're allowing that to go outside of our community, but to me, that makes just bad business for the city of Frankfort. So that's my opinion.
But with those relationships too, like during the flood, when we needed help from other agencies, we have those relationships built, and, and you make a phone call, and they're sending their officers here to help us out. So, so I said, we have really good relationships with those agencies, and so it's, this kind of a delicate subject, I guess. You know, the, the MOU stuff, I get that. I'm sure that they all have insurance, but we can, we can formalize it. I'm sure at some point it was formal, I don't know what the expiration date is on those things, because they said, I've been here, gone on twenty-three years, and I think most of them have been using that range for, for that long, but we can revisit that.
Everybody good? I appreciate your extended time on this. Good information. Moving on to action items. We have a first reading. This is an ordinance authorizing the bonds for the fire station. Looking for a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
An ordinance of the city of Frankfort, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its City of Frankfort, Kentucky General Obligation Bonds, Series 2026A, in the approximate aggregate principal amount of nine million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, for the purpose of financing the costs of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a new municipal fire station and related facilities, furnishings, and equipment within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt, debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, establishing a bond payment fund for the bonds, affirming the maintenance of the existing sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bid of the purchaser for the bonds, and repealing any inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance authorizes the issuance by the city of Frankfort of a series of general obligation bonds designated as City of Frankfort, Kentucky General Obligation Bonds, Series 2026A, for the purposes of financing all or a portion of the costs of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and installing a new municipal fire station and related facilities, furnishings, and equipment within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city, for the well-being and benefit of the citizens of the city, paying capitalized interest on the bonds if desirable, paying all or a portion of the costs of the, of the credit enhancements for the bonds, if any, and paying all or a portion of the costs of issuance of the bond, of the bonds. And that's it.
Okay, is there any discussion on this proposed ordinance? If not, we'll move, we'll look to put this on the voting meeting for November, correct? And that's the end of action items. As tentative agenda, I know we have parks fees that we're looking at, the fire station We may have some unfinished business with the life insurance taxation that we talked about last time, the company. Anything else?
We, garbage, garbage was December.
December.
December, okay.
Now, if we can move on, no unfinished business, I think, from last meeting. Any new business that come before the board? Not, I'll open it up for board comments.
I'd like to.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
I wanna thank staff today, that was a long morning, so I just kinda wanted to say thank you. I think I said it afterward to maybe all of you individual, but I, I want you to be completely candid with me. I hope all of us. I mean, the truth, nothing but the truth. I'm serious. I mean, it could be bad news, I'd rather have the bad news upfront, right? And, and opinions, right? Because I think all of you are, are, what's the term I like to use, you're a, a, an expert in your, in your field, right? So I think, I don't know, I like it. I like to hear feedback from, from everyone, and I appreciate enduring this morning.
Commissioner Smith-Willis.
I also just wanted to piggyback off of Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson, but also I would kinda wanna shout out, just parks, city staff, everybody out there that is like currently just actively doing this part of the busy season. I think Q4 for everybody is super, super rigorous, so I just really appreciate the staff. I saw the men working on the Christmas tree today, which was really awesome to see. So I just really wanted to say thank you, everybody, also to you all this morning, it was a long day, but I genuinely appreciate sharing space with everybody between the commissioners, city manager, staff. Just really appreciate you all.
Any other board comments?
Motion adjourned.
Not, well, we've gotten out, we have a motion.
Wait a minute, sorry.
Do you mind taking that back?
I didn't read. Let me back that off.
How about, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B, deliberations on the future acquisition of real property to possibly support the sewer department or the fire department operations where publicity would be likely to affect the value. Action may be taken in open session.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we're going to executive session. All right, we're going to executive session.